Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Cascade Supervisor Grace Lesbrenz. Clerk Slater, please call the role.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrenz.
Here.
Director Korsdun.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the divine, holy and sacred state of America. Consider the republic which stands one nation under God, and in its own liberty and justice.
Is there an approval for tonight's agenda?
Airplane makes an a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have one presentation this evening. Mike Reese from Troyer Group is here to present the board's an update on the improvements that will be happening at the Cascade Rec Park on Thornapple River Drive near the expressway. And I also see we have a new introduction tonight.
So before we jump into that, it's appropriate that we also introduce Dan Zwick, who's over here to my right. He is the new Parks and Facilities Director for Cascade Township. He's two and a half days, three days on the job and already getting well acquainted with the community. So just wanted to welcome him and I think it's appropriate that he's here and we're talking about the park tonight. So I'm going to jump over there to do the presentation.
Okay.
Like to manage it and then Mike is in the audience.
All right, thank you and good evening. So we started the rec park master plan this summer. I've been going through public engagement. We had an online public survey that was out for, ended up being a couple of months. So we could get it included in a newsletter mailing. So between the social media and website and the mailers, we were able to get eight hundred and eighty-six responses, which was great to see. They were, the first question was if you're a homeowner in Cascade or renter or reside outside of the township. And then we could categorize the answers based on those three. So it's kind of helpful to see what residents were saying versus people outside the township that still use the park. You know, five hundred and twenty-seven from Cascade homeowners and we actually had three hundred and thirty-five responses from those outside the township, which was a pretty high amount. So going on to the next page, just a question about why parks are most important to you and had them select the top three. You can see from the Cascade homeowners that providing opportunities to enjoy the nature and outdoors and providing family friendly activities and opportu- opportunities for children's play were the highest. For the non-residents and renters, the participating in athletics and sports ranked the highest. So we probably have, you know, a lot of people coming from neighboring communities to use some of the amenities there at the park. So kind of tying in with that, the question is what amenities do you use most? The homeowners, the walking path was the most, followed by the playground and pickleball. Where the non-residents, the highest was the disc golf course. So I found that interesting, followed by the walking path and pickleball as well. Let me just had a question about any, if there's anything that challenges people of why they don't use the park more often. And, you know, such as not enough time, lack of facilities, poorly maintained, too far away. None of those were too much of an issue. Most people said they really didn't have any issue or challenges with using the parks. One thing we talked about was adding programming to the parks and recreation. So we included a question to see what people would be interested in as far as programs. And there's a pretty overwhelming response, about half the respondents said they would take part in adult, our youth programs, fitness classes, nature-based programs, things along that nature. So again, with the homeowners, it was pretty fairly even among those different types of programs. Whereas the non-residents, by far the largest response was adult athletic programs. Again, tying into some of those former questions and responses. And then lastly, we asked a question about what amenities and facilities you'd be most interested in seeing. With the homeowners, splash pad and ice skating rink and more winter activities. That kind of go along with the sledding hill there were the two highest. More trees, more pickleball courts and bathrooms by the pickleball and dog park, as well as an expanded playground were the highest responses. For the non-Cascade residents, redesigned disc golf course. We also got a lot of comments in the open-ended question about redesigning and taking use of some different parts of the park to see some improvements in the disc golf course, but this did show that it was pretty well used. And again, the pickleball courts and restrooms up there were popular response. So in, just wanted to kind of go through this and share this information before we go to the next step of developing some preliminary options for the master plan. Be looking to kind of finish up this process over the next couple of months and identify some improvement projects, some phasing. There's obviously a lot of things that can be done there that would make sense to do over, you know, multiple years. We're looking at DNR grant funding to help with some of the improvements. The first, those are due April first each year. So we could work on an application for phase one for this April first, 2025, or the following year, depending how that can shake out. So would be happy to answer any questions on the survey or next steps.
What are some questions? One, can we get this sent to us?
Sure.
And then I know a couple of questions I have because I think we ran through it pretty quickly, but the dog park usage. You talked about, you know, trail being something that people used a lot. Where was the, I don't know if we can go to that so we can see it again.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know where the dog park usage is. I feel like.
It was thirty-five percent said that they, thirty-five percent of the Cascade homeowners said they used it.
Thirty-seven renters.
Were twenty percent of non-residents. So it was kind of middle range of all the amenities.
Just wondering, I know we've had some issues there. Some aggressive dogs and some different things. So I was just wondering where that fell in line. And then the other question I have with here. And again, I think this question, I would have liked to broke this question out if we could have seen this prior to the survey going out. We have several sports fields within the park. But I think the big question I feel for the board when we're talking about improving the fields or improving the park is which, which or what fields do we need?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't currently, and I don't think it's on here, have a lacrosse field, but I know in the past, the school lacrosse teams have rented fields, probably I'm guessing our soccer fields to, you know, practice. It would be nice to know, and maybe we can get that data from who is renting the fields to know where they're at volume-wise of who's renting and using them the most between the baseball fields and the soccer fields. I think it's just those two mainly right now that people use, but.
Yeah, there was, the soccer fields were used more than the baseball fields, twenty-six percent to nine.
And to be honest, I mean, our baseball fields.
Well, and that's part of the, you know, it could be used more if they were improved and I know, you know, I I talked with like the TV.
It would have been a good reason, a good question to have asked in here because they're not being used. They're one of the minimum things being used. But if we were to put money into the fields, what do we need to put money into to improve that the residents or the community needs, I think is an important question.
Yeah, so in the amenities question, at the end, we had more or improved soccer fields and then improved the two baseball fields. So those were broken out. Again, the soccer fields were higher than improving the baseball fields. But again, they were much lower compared to a lot of the other amenities. I did talk with, we met out on site with AYSO, who currently uses the fields a lot. And then talked with the TVBL board member for the baseball league. I also coached my son in that and we've used the fields, but it's been a couple of years, mostly because of the condition, but there's also been a decline in numbers, partly just because baseball, youth numbers are going down a little bit, but there's also been an increase in travel leagues. And then.
That's, I think that's the hard part. I don't know, this is probably a question for our new parks director too. I know, I think I have been gotten emails and I know Grace has as well from different travel teams where not the majority of their members on their travel team, but a lot of their members on the travels team live locally and they're traveling across the city, you know, Grand Rapids to someplace else to do practice because they don't have availability within our community for them to, as a travel team, which they would pay fairly high amounts, I would think, you know, to utilize our fields. And I think we don't have that information to be able to make any sort of decision either.
And that's something we're doing outside of the public input survey is talking to those different leagues for soccer and baseball. Also talked with the Ada Parks Director about their fields, how they rent those out and kind of usage they see, you know, they have the softball leagues for adult that uses the fields. They also will have travel baseball teams there, but he did say, you know, they're not used as much as they would hope. And they also have a lot of people using them just in the outfield, like you mentioned, lacrosse, youth soccer, things like that. So, but because the outfield's are in good condition, they can also do that. So it still, even though it is a baseball field, it can still be work, can still function with other leagues and groups. Now you wouldn't get a, it would be, you know, much younger kids that don't need a large field size.
What is using, I mean, it's less than middle school usually, usually locally, the middle and high school kids, we have facilities that are, are schools. And I think that's kind of the question is between, you know, youth football and lacrosse is not being addressed in here either at all. And it wasn't asked at all and that's the other piece and I don't know.
Can you do that? Can you share, play more than one sport on a field without messing it up?
Yeah.
They do, I know if, because the reason I'm worried is admin field, you know, there's talk about that going away. You never know what's going to happen. They've moved down to that building, but that's one field that I know the school utilized, and it's not the school. It's the Forest Hills Youth Association.
Yeah.
Uses that for both football and lacrosse. And if something were to happen in that field, we don't have any other place within the community for them.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's limited space and usable space at the rec park. But that's one of the big things is those two baseball fields, you know, and the different concepts will kind of answer that question. We'll have justification of, you know, why each was chosen how it was, but do we restore those two fields? Do we keep one? Or do we just have a, you know, a more open practice field that can be used for soccer and other things more easily because you don't have the fences, you don't have the infield. There's also talk about doing a synthetic soccer field, either up in the current field location or where the baseball fields are. But there's also pros and cons about doing the synthetic, so.
I'm glad you separated it between Cascade property, owner, residents, then rentals and then non-Cascade residents because for spending people's tax dollars, I don't really care what non-residents say, so, you know.
Yeah, it helps and especially with, you know, three hundred and thirty-five responses from non-residents. If we didn't have that broken out, you could assume, oh, probably eighty percent of the people were residents when really it wasn't.
Everybody cares, of course. Right, and then if you hadn't waited a couple of weeks extra and sent it in the quarterly newsletter and hadn't separated this out, then the responses would have been primarily.
It could have been even more of a split based on who follows the social media or maybe disc golf groups spread the word of the survey or, you know.
Well, and disc golf is one of the cheapest probably things to redo there, let's be honest. And it's very, it's not taking up a lot of space. It can be done, but you know, between fields or things like that where, you know, the disc golf is probably my least, not my least worry, but the easiest to keep or to do anything.
Yeah, it probably won't dictate a lot of the other improvements.
And hopefully it would not be very expensive if we had to upgrade some difficult, whatever those baskets.
Yeah, there's comments about, you know, making concrete pads for the tees just for injury and, you know, there's some ruts and some areas like that. So something like that, you know, it's not going to impact the overall design, but it's just a, you know, inexpensive improvement that would certainly help the safety of the disc golf course though.
How would residents find this? Do we have it on the website already or?
We, we will after tonight, we wanted to roll out to you because the board was, I don't think they were, they were privy to this information before us, before we left to the public. It was appropriate to bring it to you first to, to present it and have this discussion and then it'll be on, on the website for sure.
And we've got time to kind of let this marinate and Director Zwick to.
Yeah, I said, I haven't met Dan yet, so I want to, you know, talk to him, the Parks Committee as well to, and then as we're working to get these concepts together and then get feedback from the board on those before we kind of merge it down to one final concept and the phasing that would go along with it.
Could we real quick share the other new employee in the Parks and Facilities Department? Just because it kind of blends in with this.
Absolutely, so programming was a big piece of this survey. And along with bringing Dan on board, we actually brought on a Parks and Facilities Coordinator, which is going to work on the programming, not just in our parks, but all of the township's facilities. So our buildings, events, things like that. Her name is Sydney and she started last week, but she's already hit the ground running. We're already talking about some things she's got planned for both this building, this particular room and in our parks in the first of the year. So we're really impressed with her and so I think it'll be really good for Mike to sit down with Dan and Sydney and look and dive into these responses even more and then kind of proceed and look at some next steps. But yeah, we're super excited to have the Parks Department growing and, and obviously whatever's decided here too. Dan and I have had some conversations over the last couple of days about the maintenance of the parks to this point. So whatever is implemented, obviously we'll put together a preventative maintenance program after construction or completion.
I see we have our volunteer coordinator here tonight too. This is great, Janine Hyble, but she, Sydney was brought on without any additional operating cost, right? That's within our existing budget.
Correct, correct, yep.
Awesome, thank you. So what are the next steps?
So we will work on kind of getting all this information. Talked to a lot of the different, you know, soccer and baseball leagues, have a couple more that I still haven't heard back from that I'd like to, and then work on getting some concepts together for taking all of this and getting it on into plan. So and then at an upcoming meeting, I can present that to Parks Committee and to the board for feedback. Then we also, we're going to have a public open house. Once we were waiting to have that until we had some concepts and some different ideas and things that the public could react to. So we'd get the feedback from you guys, the Parks Committee and the public before finalizing the plan.
I'm just thinking about the emails I think that we've gotten from different people. Maybe we can forward them to you or give them your contact information to reach out to you so they can express thoughts, I guess.
Sure.
Actually, if you could, could we siphon those through Dan to make sure that we know in the loop? The other piece that we'll keep in mind as we go through this survey and just, and work on the concepts internally is also the strategic plan that the board did a few years ago to make sure that, you know, these survey results align with the survey results and the strategic plan that was approved to make sure if there's any sort of, you know, differences between the two that we address that and say, okay, which direction do we really want to go? Because this is what they say now and this is what it said, you know, a few years ago. So we just want to make sure.
And the same goes with the five-year parks.
Yes, and the master plan, yep.
Yeah, multiple planning efforts previously as well that tie into this, but more of a broad level than what this does.
For the rec park, last year we had a lot of, there was incidents that we heard a lot about aggressive dogs and how realistically how you can stop that or track it, keep certain dogs out. And the reality is you really can't very easily. But one thing that came up as a possible idea is having key cards that residents can have, which means then you're limiting, it's a, it's a township park. So then limiting access to the dog park to Cascade residents through the key card system. I'm just curious, I, it hasn't really been fleshed out, but it's an interesting thought. The flip side is you go there to socialize your dog, so then you're standing around and no one's there. I don't know, it'd be interesting.
Well, in the, I think the whole point too with a key card or whatever, key card or whatever it ends up being is you can provide some sort of proof of like rabies vaccination and, you know, those kinds of things too. So when your dog goes, does go there, because I don't bring my dogs to the dog park because I don't know what's.
I did, but then they got old and I just.
But I think it gives a way to make sure that something is somewhat monitored. And if there is an aggressive incident, at least you have a list of everybody that's within, in that park at that time or within that frame to know.
Something for people to think about because there were a lot of angry people, how come you can't do anything? And the reality is you can't, but then everything's got to give and take, you know? We could do something, but then it might have less visitors.
Yep. No, that's good things to talk about and things that we can, you know, while it's not a, you know, item and amenity on the master plan, it can fit in with the recommendation, recommendations and policies and things like that that go with it. Because it certainly is important in how that dog park is used and will be used in the future.
Thank you, this is off to a great start.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Oh, except first public comment, article five. Now is the time to comment on anything scheduled for tonight's agenda. That would be any comments about the rec park improvements. And then also Manager Smith's annual review. The fiscal year 2025 budget is on tonight's agenda, but there will be a separate public hearing for people to comment during that. Any other comments we'll have following the board's business, so at this time we'll welcome, we welcome visitors in person or also virtually. Okay, article six, approval of the consent agenda.
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda as printed for tonight.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid on October 10th. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve the invoices scheduled to be paid tomorrow.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the financial actions. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, having no unfinished business. Article nine, new business. Both new business items relate to the fiscal year 2025 budget. So we'll turn it over to Manager Smith and Planning, or Financial Director Nannarichi to handle the sequence, probably have the presentation before the.
Yep, so Lauren is going to go through a quick overview of the 2025 proposed budget and then we can lead into the public hearing, a lot of what we discussed. Or a lot of us before you was already discussed at the work session, which was completed two weeks ago. That video is also available online for the public to, to see what was discussed there. But at this point, I'll turn it over to, to Lorna.
Thank you, Manager Smith. And this sounds like it's on, even though I don't have much of a coding anymore on the mic. Good evening, Board Supervisor. You have before you in the packet, the full budget presentation for fiscal year 2025. All budgets are balanced and a balanced budget in the terms of eyes of the state is fund balance plus revenue minus expenditures equals ending fund balance. And as long as that ending fund balance is positive, a budget complies with the state guidelines as a balanced, balanced budget. The general fund is the main operating fund of the township that is at just shy of 6.9 million dollars of expenditures next year. And for the rest of the township funds, which would be fire fund, open space fund, pathways, our ERPA money, CARES Act, that's, and DDA, just pointed out some, some of the larger funds. That is just shy of 16 million dollars. So for a small-ish township, we've got a lot going on. I'm here for questions and as Jade said, we, we went into depth in this budget two weeks ago. The packet, it, the budget packet has been in the full board packet. The presentation has been online, so I'm here for questions. Actually, before that, excuse me, tonight is just a review and the public hearing on the budget. And in the packet is a draft resolution for the board to review. And if everything looks good, in two weeks there will be an agenda item asking the board to adopt the budget. I will not be present at that meeting. Oh, uh-oh, no, 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 uh-oh, no, 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 uh-oh. Wonderful. We reviewed it at the work session, we discussed it in Personnel and Finance Committee, and I'm feeling really good about the 25 budget.
I asked Jade, but I just wanted to go on record, under other personnel expenses for next year, we had a, a step program. Each job within the township had a step, low, medium, and upper range. Did the budget, is a budget taking into consideration any people that outside of merit increase would need a step adjustment?
Oh, absolutely, trustee. Personnel is a good fifty or sixty percent of the total township budget. So we need to be, we, we need to spend a lot of time on budgeting personnel and we do. So we look at each person, where they are in a range and treat them accordingly.
And, and we took into consideration a percentage that we put into there based on the new comp study that is going to be completed this year, just to make sure that we are being competitive with our raises and adjusting the salary ranges for employees, so that is being done by an outside firm. And we did put into the budget a percentage, just knowing that there could possibly, we have no idea how many, but we did put in a percentage to, to make sure we had that budgeted for any of those adjustments as well.
And as mentioned in the budget letter in the packet, those dollars are set aside in a contingency area. Those dollars were not built into each department's personnel line.
They were in the past, right?
So it protects it a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good change.
So just to add to that, as a result, so the steps that we currently have in place were appropriate, were applied to the current employees. After the compensation study comes back and then, and we've had a chance to take a look at it and apply that to our employees, we're going to redo that step program to make sure that it is aligned with the compensation study itself.
So we can be competitive.
Correct, yes.
Will that be done before we adopt a budget?
We're talking about adopting in two weeks.
No, the compensation study results are not even due back till the end of the year.
So that'll occur in future years.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're not approving that when we approve the budget or just the contingency that you've added?
Just the contingency, yep, correct.
And with that, I believe we need to, if you're to that point, to open a public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook to enter public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, now is the time for anyone with questions about the budget, revenues, different funds. No question is stupid. Anyone virtually? Anyone virtually? Okay, don't complain later when this is all passed, you had the opportunity, people are going to complain about the finances. Let's just say it's so great, that's why.
I know.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yes. I mean, you can complain, but.
On the budget.
Good evening, sir.
Well, hi, Ken Vandercock, seventy two hundred Leighton. Um, we're in the business of inspecting houses. Are they contributing? Or are they holding on to their pot? In the inspection department.
Great question. That's been the subject of a lot of discussions. You're talking about the building department.
Building department.
That serves Cascade Township and several other townships. Uh, who wants to address that?
I can take it. So yes, the building department inspections department is incorporated into this budget. They are absolutely a part of the township. They are not a separate entity. They are a segregated fund because building funds have to be spent in a particular way per state statute. But their budgets are incorporated into what the board will be approving. And in addition, there are overhead allocations that are charged to the building department that come back into the general fund. To offset some of the internal expenses that we have that they would have to incur if they were their own, let's say, company. So we do incorporate an overhead allocation back into our general fund from the building department. But the way Cascade historically has been set up, they have their own segregated fund that all of those dollars are in and have to manage that, those activities.
And just to plug for Jade. We were not taking or getting what the normal would be or the, the full amount that we could.
I could say, are we getting our cut back for uh? Okay, that's what I was just wondering.
That was a best practice. Yeah, that was a best practice that we put into place. I don't even, yeah, it's a best practice. It applies to more than just the building fund too. I want to make sure that that's clear. So any dedicated fund out there that uses. The, the finance department is a really good example. They do the finances for all departments, no matter what the funding mechanism is in the township. So there should be an overhead allocation that comes back into the general fund to support Lorna's duties and activities. And everybody else that's in the finance department. So yes, it, that was a best practice that was implemented back in twenty twenty. Twenty-three for the twenty-four budget and it's continuing this year as well.
When Jade started.
It hadn't happened. And so what happens, it's not a for-profit business despite what come.
But they were, they were holding a big pot there, weren't they? Their own.
I wouldn't say, I, I want to just make sure we clarify this, because it's not they versus them or us. It's, it's the township never applied it appropriately. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So I wouldn't say that they were holding it. Because the township always had the authority to pull it. If that makes sense.
It wasn't, yes, exactly. It just wasn't being exercised, but so instead you had a. Money that sat there.
Sat there and didn't go into the general fund and we were, we were.
We, we were not.
We were paying the unemployment benefits and everything else on these people and they were holding back for that.
Any, any expense, I would have to go back and look at the audits, but any expenses that were building related came out of the building fund. With the exception of the overhead allocation.
Okay, good, thank you.
And Carrie uh from twenty-nine twenty-nine Thornapple River Drive, and I guess this is a budget question. I brought it up with some other members of the board prior to this, but. Uh, about seven years ago, my wife and I were, I, I live across from West Tassel Park. And after one of the huge rainstorms, as a matter of fact, the one that popped the boards up on the lower part of the deck over there. Um, two kids went around the barrier and climbed up the fish ladder. And we're getting ready to jump into the dam area, thinking that it, it would just shoot him up. Shoot him up in the air and down the river. Um, I told them that I had my cell phone with me and I said, listen, I'm going to call nine one one if you guys don't immediately come down. I know you're going to get charged with trespassing, but if you jump, I assume you're going to be hurt. So I'm going to call for emergency services and. In today's environment, you have people posting YouTube challenges to people and kids do stupid things. And I shudder to think what would have happened if we weren't there to talk these two kids down. Uh, my question on the budget is, is there anything in the budget for the signage? Um, for less castle park because it's, it's pretty bad. And, and I think that. The township would be better served if, if. There was some signage there that posed the real damage or the real danger. That could happen in the event of some kids doing something stupid. I, I talked with Melanie prior, I, I guess I'm surprised that she's not the parks director anymore and she had told me that. They did have some signage, um. Uh, something in the budget for redoing the signage over there and I, I think it would be in, in, in everybody's best interest. Had we not been there and threatened those kids. Um, I know they were going to jump. Uh, and you know, it, they probably just thought that it would, they would jump in and it would. But you, I, I told them, and at the time, the signage there did show. What caused that water to shoot so violently up in the air, which is a cement abutment. Down below the dam that forces that water up to release some of the energy so it doesn't erode the banks. And uh, I think it should be a real priority that danger signs be put up there. Because you can get around those barriers if you want to, and um, I hope that's somewhere in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sure, if you want to. I know we've had the discussion.
Yes.
I know it's in the budget.
It is in the budget. It's actually in this year's budget, but it was not implemented. Um, I was at Tassel Park today with the new parks director and we've already talked about it and it's going to be signage across all the parks. Um, that sign you're specifically talking about at the dam, there is, it's a, it's a post with, it's a blank white. It's so faded and peeled, so it's definitely going to be something. And the fish ladder is gone.
Gone, gone?
No, the internal one was, because that was a requirement by FERC, so that was, was one of the findings.
Any other comments? Their motion?
Move to close public hearing.
The motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook to close the public hearing. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Judge Corstang.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, Mr. supervisor last night.
Yes, motion carried. We're back in a um regular session. Any action required or further um discussion on the board's review of the proposed budget?
Just if there's any questions for Lorna, now's your time.
Until noon Saturday.
No, thank you. Keep up the good work. Uh, I wonder if, because we're going to enter closed session, if there are any manager or board comments, if anyone has any um. Objection to moving those ahead and article twelve closed session after those. So people don't have to wait around.
Yeah, public comments again too.
After we do public comments. All right, next up, public comments, uh, whether it's on tonight's agenda or um or not.
Ken Vandercock, seventy-two hundred Leighton. Monday, we went over and planted flowers at the museum. We had, I don't know, six or eight people, ten people. There was quite a few. And it was the noisiest place in the world. Jake breaking, I wouldn't, it was so noisy, you couldn't hear each other. Are we going to have a sign or aren't we going to have them?
We can, as I've said before, we can put up the signs. I'm working with the, the road commission. They don't want the signs out and it's an enforcement issue. So I, I don't have anybody that I could actually sit at that corner or they and just hand out tickets.
You can't put up a sign?
The road commission does not want the signs up.
What, so it's.
It's their jurisdiction.
They have the call on it. So it's noisy down there.
I mean, we have the ordinance.
To go to that museum now, uh, it's, it's quite a mess down there.
We have the ordinance in place and can find if. The sheriff's office happens to be right there at that time, but I don't know that it's the, the will of the, the board to have the sheriff's office sit at that corner. All day handing out tickets.
No, but if there's a sign up there, maybe it would stop a driver or two.
We've heard that too with, well, deer crossing signs, like a lot of the problems that are dangers on the road. And then every, and when we do ask the road commission about the signage or speeding, it happens all the time, speeding, right? Slow down, danger, kids crossing. And they have a better way to word it, but essentially they, you know, just because we put a sign up doesn't mean people listen to it. And also if you're hesitant to do it, because um, if you do it every time there's a concern, it becomes less and less effective. Not saying, that's just the stance that we've heard from the road commission because. Because there's all sorts of issues that come up on the public roads that we would love to make people aware of. Slow down, like actually slow down, but just because there's a sign, they said it's, you know. Doesn't mean it happens. I don't think signage would be effective is what.
And are you referring to Thornapple River Drive or Cascade Road?
Right at the corner, Cascade and.
I know, but on Cas, as the vehicles on Cascade are.
They were on Cascade Road.
So that's M dot, that's a whole different animal. That.
They were, they were coming both ways, they.
So you can see how like it's, it's not easy to manage. I mean, I understand that it was loud, but it's, that's very hard to manage how, when we're going to. Control the traffic and have somebody out there. We're going to spend all of our resources on Jake break. That's, I don't know that that's the best use of the resources.
They had low boys going through there with, with concrete, chunks of concrete on there. Um, five feet high. I mean, there was chunks, chunks that they took out.
And I don't know what.
Stop from coming down around the, through the hills there to the, to the red light there. He was, he was on it all the way to stop. And uh.
I will mention it to the sheriff's office again.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody's going to stop doing that unless there are some. Now, there are people that follow, um, and I've talked to the truck drivers about it. They, they use Jake brakes to save their brakes. It is a safety issue because if they don't use their Jake brakes, they're going to slow down. Because they don't want to use their conventional brakes. So if you could at least put up signage, yeah, I, I don't think you have to monitor it, but there are people that follow the rules. There are truck drivers that follow the rules. And I've talked to some of those drivers uh personally and they said, we do it because we're allowed to do it. And it's extremely noisy. It's way more noisy than acceleration. Um, and, and I, I had heard it explained to me that it was also. A safety issue. Well, it's not a safety issue in Berry County. It's not, uh, we just got back from. Uh, a trip up north. There are a lot of towns that institute no Jake breaking, no compression breaking.
We, we have the ordinance.
Right.
Board passed it in.
You're in the city limits, it's or a village. You're an entirely, then you have the ability to, you own your roads, you control your roads, you're allowed to put up signs. Townships, townships, every township in the state of Michigan does not have the authority to put up signs. So this governing body at the township level, unlike a city or a village. The appropriate governing body to, to bring this concern up to as far as signage is the county road commission. But I think you'll get a better response from the road commission.
Now, have they told you that it's a safety issue? Or did they just say that they're in control of the roads? They don't want it in uh.
They're usually pretty thoughtful in their response, but the reality is this township board has zero jurisdiction over road signage. We always bring the concerns that residents bring to the road commission, but we can't.
Okay.
I mean, the, the only thing this, this board has the ability to uh change is actual enforcement. And we do talk to the, the, because we contract with the sheriff's office and they do do um. High, high visibility patrols and they're already in that area, at least directed to be because there's so much speeding.
But what is their reason specifically for not?
I don't want to state it because I would sound stupid restating it, but we can get it. It's just that you guys need to have realistic expectations of what this board can do and the reality is.
Right.
Nothing.
Right. Well.
Other than convey your concerns to the road commission.
Right. Well, people do follow, do follow the rules. I, I mean, so sure, people are going to break it and so. So anyway, I just, a lot of communities are able to do this and it, let's face it, it's a quality of life issue. It, 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 yeah, it's like that every day, day in and day out. He was annoyed just planting flowers. I live there. And it, it is just an ongoing issue and coming down Cascade Road into the village. Um, the, the noise is extremely annoying.
Thank you.
Hi there, Scott Fansalkma. Um, in regards to the ordinance, yeah, it's there, but Jake breaking is allowed all over the place. And the local truckers aren't going to know the laws of every single township without a sign saying Jake breaks not allowed here. So there need, that's the only way you can really enforce it. If they take it to court and there's like, is there a sign anywhere in the township? They'd say no. The ticket's going to get tossed, so the, you can't have one without the other. Um, also, I'm still here asking about twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight oh four Thornapple River Drive. Um, if we can ever get those up for sale. Just so you guys know, the house at. Thirteen twenty-five Thornapple River Drive is the first one just over the Camelback Bridge there, right on the river. That's sold back in February for eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And they tore it down to, I'm assuming, build another house. So you guys are sitting on a vacant land on the river. That somebody else bought, you know, down the road. Obviously, it's a little different stretch of river, but still eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a home and they tore it down. So. And we're just sitting on that land that again is ten par, uh, what? Ten parcels in from Cascade Road and when two other parcels in between Cascade Road and those home and those vacant lots came up for sale. The Village Bike Shop and also the uh building right next to it in between the time that. Not this whole board, but some members on the board bought those houses and uh, yeah, so um, there's that. Also, um. Oh, I'm curious, what is up with the big empty spaces in the front of the new Friendship Park here? I mean, I don't know if you guys noticed it. I'm just curious. Obviously, I'm assuming there's some sort of landscaping.
The dead.
I didn't memorize it. Yes.
What? Okay, uh, that's the final phase of Friendship Park. So that whole area, it would be planted, it will be planted. Um, but they had to wait for cooler wa, cooler weather, um, prayer, native prairies and wildflowers. It should get four feet or so, so you'll have more of a buffer between the road and the park, but it'll take a little bit for it to be established.
Okay.
It does look pretty bad.
Yeah, but I mean, I understand with plantings and all that, so that makes sense. And then also. Has there been any more things with the deer? Um, before I left my house, there was a probably an eight-point buck in my backyard and five doe in my neighborhood. As I'm just leaving and I live right in the village, so. Evidently not, no. I've seen several on the side of the road, you know, they're not moving, but they. They're, they're getting taken out somehow, but you know, obviously we don't want people getting hurt, but.
How much did we, so the, the township voluntarily partnered with the Kent County Road Commission who's doing. Uh, who's looking into a study and then possible solutions and partnership with the DNR.
There's a lot of information online about what Kent County is doing, which is what we're recommending every.
But we're not going to do anything in isolation.
Okay, no, I.
Because we cleared out a certain area using taxpayer dollars, the waiting list for all the deer in Cal, you know.
And also what about those Elon site? Speed signs that can get mounted up. I'd seen any of those out.
Oh, we'll have to look into those. The basically, yeah.
We have, I understand they're sort of hard to hang up, but I mean, they're not that difficult. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Michael Corey, I live on Goodwood. Uh, first ever meeting, so thank you all for your service. I have two questions. I don't know if you can answer. Um, or if I'm allowed to ask them, but I noticed on Thornapple River Drive, there's a bunch of trees that are, have red Xs on them. Is there uh any plans to put a walkway along there or is there something that is uh available somewhere? I know it's pretty dangerous. They've spoken about the people that go racing through there. You guys probably all know that as well, but I was just curious if there's any sort of walkway, if that's. Or if there's a spot I could be directed to, to what might be the plan for that area.
Are you part of the PFAS neighborhood? One of the.
Yeah, uh, Goodwood. Well, yeah, we're in the back. There was a Pulte development years ago, thirty-eight sixteen Goodwood. So we've seen all the, is that all the plumbing that got changed? Yeah, uh, Goodwood. Well, yeah, we're in the back. There was a Pulte development years ago, thirty-eight sixteen Goodwood. So we've seen all the, is that all the plumbing that got changed out over the? So yeah, we're there, but I don't think we're affected.
Okay. I haven't seen the.
We talked about it earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Um, thank you. The deer. Uh, if there's any way to hunt them or get rid of them, my wife would be very happy because they eat all her flowers and, uh, we see. Like we saw nine of them, uh, in our backyard. So I would support any sort of. If there's any sort of urban hunting season that could be a special exception, because there are a lot of them, uh, back there, uh, and there's some pretty big herds and. I'm buying a lot of plants, so Flowerland is, is very happy, but my wife's not. Well.
The township has the exact, whatever the state rules are for hunting is what applies throughout the township. So even though it seems like a suburban, more urban area or neighborhoods. The same hunting rules apply as far as how far you have to be from a, a home or building, structure, that kind of stuff. So the. People complain all the time, but if people actually start hunting them where that's allowed, you're not gonna hear any pushback from us.
Okay, so, but perhaps.
People don't hunt or a bunch of suburban people will sit around and, you know, complain, but we don't hunt.
I have to add, the DNR did add an extended late season doe season in the state of, or in certain counties within Michigan and Kent County is one of them. So if. The rules apply where you're hunting, they are, they did extend a late season doe and. Don't quote me. I think it's through December and January that they've extended.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're familiar with that. We're just wondering if maybe. Perhaps our neighbors got together since the wooded area is a little closer than what the DNR allows. If there was, if, if all the neighbors in the general area agreed, would there be any way that we could bring that to the board and it would be?
As far as using taxpayer dollars to kill a deer in your neighbor?
No, just that we don't get in trouble.
Yeah, unless it's, uh, if you need some permission from, you know what I mean? If the property owner has to.
It's a DNR.
I know, I'm saying allowed by the state. Like if you have permission from the property owner or something.
Yeah, property owner can hunt within four hundred and fifty feet of their own building.
That's it. They're DNR rules.
Okay.
We, we, um, need to revisit and we will, we just didn't have the capacity at the staff level, peace park, um, deer hunting. And then also, um. Obviously with the road commission, we're participating in that, but, um. As far as taking a bunch of deer out at one spot in the, in the township to use taxpayer money. The experts agree that then that just brings neighboring deer into that. So if we want an actual effective solution. And, and use taxpayer money responsibly, we're not just gonna do an isolated.
I, I don't want to use taxpayer money. I just.
But we, please. Come back and give us an update and I think we'd all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, how about manager comments and then we'll do the closed session after board and manager.
Okay, thank you supervisor. Uh, just a couple of things. One is in regards to the trees on Thornapple River Drive. That was new to us as of today. We just saw the equipment out there. We don't know who's taking down those trees. So. First thing I'm gonna do tomorrow is get ahold of the road commission to see if it's actually something that they're doing in the right of way. Or is that private property that are taking down trees? Because we, it's nothing that the township has instigated, um, or spearheaded. So we'll. We'll find out some more information on that because the, the equipment was actually parked at Tassel Park today too, that we were unaware of that they were parking on the park or at the park. So more to come on that. Um, in regards to Friendship Park, there was a question about the dead, um, areas. There is gonna be an article about that in the newsletter that's gonna come out in two weeks as well, because we were, actually, we are receiving some questions on that. Um, I just want to thank the Kent Car- County Garden Club, uh, Janine, the volunteers that were out there. And Harder and Warner, if you have not been out to Memorial Park, which is on the corner of Thornapple River Drive and Cascade. They've completely redone the landscaping and some of the hardscape. They've moved the flagpole. I was out there today. It looks great. It's much more period appropriate than what was there. I didn't even know that there was actually a cement like wall. Around the plantings. It just, it looks so nice. So definitely encourage everybody to take a look out there. There's still a little bit of work to do, um, irrigation, electrical, but it's, it's looking great. And. Oh, I just wanted, like I said earlier, I wanted to welcome Dan as the new, uh, Parks and Facilities Director and then a great job to Director Nintorini, um, on the twenty-twenty-five budget. So she won't be at the next meeting, but I will thank her now because a lot of time and effort went into that. And, um, I think we've got a, a real good document in front of us. So, that's all I have.
Uh, board member comments?
I'll just stand up and thank you for coming. Both Kens, you're here tonight. That's nice. Scott. Uh, Nick, you're always here. Nice to see you representing your neighborhood. Um, Crips? Thanks for all the work that you do as volunteers out of the, uh, polls. Appreciate that. And Michael and Janine, thanks for coming and all the good work that you guys do in the, uh, parks also.
That's all I have.
Oh, bring your neighbors back. I see some vacant seats somewhere still, so. Next meeting is in two weeks, so bring them along.
So I have.
I just, I just wanna say in general that Jake break thing is super frustrating and. I empathize with the residents that I've talked today that I think we put a lot of time and energy into a Jake break ordinance and now it's frustrating to stand up and hear that we don't have anything to do with it and. My opinion is I think that we need to look at it as the township go back. I, the, the trucks currently that are going through there are going to a certain site. They're coming back and forth between where they're going and to their. Location they're dumping stuff. And I, I believe because I followed them as well, um, they're going to the Burton Spalding site, which I think that's the intersection where there used to be a church. Um, on that corner.
In Keswood.
Yes, they're tearing that all out and they are hauling huge chunks of cement out and I think they're bringing loads of dirt back in. And, and I do think that the majority of truckers do want to follow the rules that I do, I mean, uh, uh, license, DOT license is a big, huge deal. And I think that, um, the fact that if we did have our sheriff patrol sitting there. Giving tickets, they, they would not want that. And I, I don't know if there's a way that we can communicate with that company that is running it. This is not a random. Company, you know, truck running back and forth once in a while. It's consistent throughout the day between. Uh, seven AM till like six PM or seven PM some nights that they are consistently running through. And I don't think it's fair to tell the residents that. There's nothing we can do. You know, we, we spent all this time on this ordinance and now, sorry about your luck, there's nothing we can do. It's, you know, MDOT roads. I do think that the majority of truckers want to do the right thing. I think there should be a way for us to reach out to the trucking company because it is consistent. It's the same one. It's not a random group of trucking. And to just notify them, hey, we don't have signs up. We are officially notifying you that we have this ordinance. There's no Jake brakes used within the township and let them know and have them communicate that with their company. I also think that we need to somehow talk to the road commission to just. Come up or figure out why we can't have signs and make an official statement to residents, um, instead of just saying. We can't put signs up because, you know, the Kent County Road Commission tells we can't. I don't think that's fair to people. I think we spent a lot of time and energy on this. And it's been a hot topic over the past year and a half. And, and I think we need to do something about it. So. Again, it'd be different if it wasn't consistent and it wasn't the same company. It was a random truck coming through. But I know it's happening. I see it happening. I follow the trucks and I think we need to try to do something.
One thing we could do, which kind of. We could do anyways, targeted enforcement at certain spots with the sheriff's department.
I agree with you, but I think Scott said. They're gonna go to court and they're gonna win because, which again, it'll make them stop doing it, but it's, it's, it's almost dumb to give a ticket when they're gonna fight it and they're gonna win because there's no sign up. Scott's correct. If there's no signage of, you can't give somebody a ticket and just expect them to know. And that's why I think the, the least we could do, and I do believe. Assuming good intent, that most truckers want to do the right thing, that we should notify the company, have them send some sort of information out to their truckers to let them know. And to see if they will stop doing it through the township. I, I think it's fair.
You know, it's not just a noise issue. You've got, you've got to keep in mind, they will slow down if they can't use their compression braking. So we could be saving lives here. It's not just a noise issue.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think it's something we should look into more and not just say it's out of our hands.
Yeah, even send them a letter. I think it's a good idea. You're right.
Timmy's trustee Nordok.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make a statement about all the political signs out there. 'Tis the season. Thank you much for all your patience. Uh, this will be over in a couple of weeks. But, uh, over, over the, uh, last night, I believe it was, an email came out from our clerk. Very pointed at Shipley and Timmy signs. That, uh, was basically a guy knows a guy. That, uh, had a problem with it and there were no locations pointed out. So we don't even know where the problem was. But, uh, I'm very disappointed. I did a run today. I didn't find any violations anywhere of our signs. I didn't find any violations of other people's signs. Uh, John went through, they were accused of being in parks. They're not in parks. Uh, John did a run last night to verify. He didn't find any in parks. Uh, why our planning director got involved in it and responding to, uh. This email is beyond me. I find it unacceptable. The signs are the signs. It is the season and when this one's done, we'll all hear the calls for Medicaid. So that's my two cents.
Uh, real quick, we received a call from the, the head of the Kent County Conservation District wanting to recognize, uh, Cascade for all the. Volunteers that have been out there working on invasive species and that kind of stuff. He is going to attend the second meeting in October, so two weeks from tonight. I'd love it. Janine, if you're able to attend, Ken, you're fifty percent of the volun- the, the regular volunteers. You could bring your other fifty percent. Opal, uh, well, it's, uh, Jerry Miller. Okay, so he, but he reached out to us directly to, um, to honor all the work you guys have done and is pretty impressed with it. So. The other thing, October seventeenth, so is that next Thursday?
Yeah.
There will be a public hearing with this board and also the Downpound Development Authority, DDA, um, where the professional design firm will. Will share initial concepts, nothing set in stone, but the initial concepts for the, um. Tassel, or excuse me, the improvements to Leslie Tassel Park and also the Tuffy property. So, and they'll get into some other village design improvements, um, just the initial ones, but it's exciting. And we'll also include what we can in the next newsletter.
When, when is that?
The seventeenth at.
One o'clock.
One o'clock. And it will be available virtually both, just like all these meetings, but, uh, you can watch it. You know, at home and then also it'll be recorded, but there will be a slideshow with pictures and. It's, it's here. Yep. But I think we have to make sure our audio and visual is set up so that if you want to watch it. From home, you'll just see the slideshow and hear all the, the explanation, but we're really excited about it. We've. I know it's been a long process, but it should be exciting. And again, just initial, they're not, we're not releasing plans. It's just the initial, uh, entering the public feedback. So. Any updates on, um, if consumers is gonna get off their tail and?
I actually got a call today from consumers that they should release the project for scheduling tomorrow.
Oh, good, but does that mean?
That means, that just means releasing it for scheduling.
To themselves?
Yes, from their planners to their service department, which will actually come out and actually disconnect. DTE, I'm still waiting on.
So the only holdup with Tuffy being ex- being leveled, the environmental, um. Surveys or, you know, reviews are complete. It's waiting on DTE and consumers to do their, um. Complete hookup detach.
And we are working with all of the local government liaisons at both entities to expedite this as quickly as possible.
And you're being extra annoying to that.
Yes.
Quasi-government branch, right?
Yes.
Good job, Jade. So otherwise, uh, as soon as we get that go-ahead, the building will be demolished and, um. Get some plans, yeah. Exciting.
That should go fast because consumers disconnects my power pretty frequently.
Yeah, until you need it, until you need it to be done and it's. That's a good point. Stop paying the bill. Um. Great thoughts. Any other board comments before we go into closed session? Next, um, article. Twelve, and this will be pursuant to, um. MCL fifteen point two six eight, section eight, which is an exception to the Open Meetings Act. Uh, the board will conduct a personnel evaluation, Manager Smith, uh, but that will be in closed session. So. We'll return after that, but just to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to a closed session?
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by Treasurer Corstange to enter closed session. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, Sir, Sir Lespert.
Yes. Motion carried. We're now in closed session.